So, it is staff is of the opinion that a conditional approval may be considered for Phase 2A. Considerations staff is supportive of granting conditional approval for Forest Park Phase 2, Plat 2A. Staff recommends conditional approval be granted, subject to developer addressing and remediating public infrastructure concerns in Phase 1, in accordance with the city code. Till such time as public infrastructure in Phase 1 is compliant with requirements of the city code, no building permits shall be issued for Plat 2A of Phase 2. Planning and zoning voted to approve this plat with this condition at the September 12 meeting. Also, an additional note, code section 11.150.4 reads that the developer shall be required to complete improvements or to post security for the completion of such improvements as herein after required for that portion of the preliminary plat for which final plat approval is requested. Any questions?
What things are on the list that need to be fixed?
There are some stormwater issues covering the majority of it. Pipes that have a fair amount sediment, silt, and rock inside of them that need cleaned up. There's also several street deficiencies. We've had conversations with developer and he understands the need for those to be fixed and has agreed to do so as he has time available.
There's engineers here as well if you have any questions for answers.
You mentioned some remedial type of things that the city had at its disposal. If they don't follow through on their commitments, what would those be again?
So, the requirement of code is that they either build the infrastructure or they bond for the completion of said infrastructure if they fail to build it. So, that's what we're working out right now is the dollar amount for that bond for those improvements. Obviously, the improvements are all but done in Phase 1, but there are some issues with us being able to accept those because as James mentioned, we need to clean up some stormwater issues. There's a few portions of the street that need to be repaired and fixed, so I'm just trying to make sure that those get buttoned up. Phase 2 will have as part of this Phase 2A plat, there will also be some infrastructure accepted, so we're working on those inspections and wrapping those up as well. Obviously, with that being new infrastructure, there's no houses out there, there's nothing causing any concern of that particular infrastructure, but Phase 1, that's been a project we've been trying to clean up for a number of years now to get that infrastructure actually accepted by the city and in our, you know, control for maintenance.
Anybody have any comments on the bond?
I believe Larkin is working up what he feels the estimate would be and then we'll kind of compare that against some of the documents that we have recently for similar work.
The hope would be is we didn't need the bond, that they won't completely-
Correct. It's just a security.
Keep the momentum going.
Larkin is doing the best he can.
So, we approve it before the bond is agreed on? What if there is a big discrepancy?
It's just the first read, so he's got months to get that sorted out.
Well, and still, I mean, the way it reads right is even if there's a disagreement on the amount of the bond, until either that's agreed to or it's done, you still can't getting building permits correct, so it's a-
It's kind of a stop in progress. Which is good for us. You have a question?
My only real question, I guess, is just the conditions of approval that are on kind of a separate page, are they part of?
Yeah. There's a line about halfway down on the first page that talks about the incorporation of terms that it comes in.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah. It's in there to make sure that's covered.
I got you. Subject to the conditions attached included herein?
Yes, sir.
As I'm looking at these conditions of approval, it does talk about that the bond, that improvements have to be made or the bond has to be posted prior to the approval of the final plat. So, it would have to be posted before we do the second reading.
Correct. That is the plan of action that Larkin has been advised of. As Darren kind of mentioned in his report, some of the delay was on our end with our sewer camera being down for quite some time. That's what we use to do a lot of the inspections of the underground infrastructure. Stephanie, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
All right. So, can I get a motion approving Council Bill Number 2023-032 in order to approve final plat for Forest Park Plat 2A?
So, we-
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Almond Bokar?
Aye.
Almond Plank?
Nay.
Almond Ode?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Nominalis?
Aye.
Old Business, Council Bill Number 1454 in ordinance approving Forest Plat, Forest Plat Number 3, preliminary plat, which is table on 9523.
All right. So, this is the second read for this. It was tied to the rezoning. This is Forest Park Phase 3. Property owner is Corey Martin Development LLC, submitting engineering firm is Engineering Surveys and Services. Christine Wood performed, Uber Engineering performed the review on behalf of the city. So, I don't know procedurally how this works, but so there was the rezoning request as well, which didn't pass by lack of vote. So, this is the preliminary plat that would also be tied to that reason.
Okay. So, let's air that. They needed to be reasoned and they'd like to have the preliminary plat authorized. The request to have the property rezoned failed, so it's not changed, it's whatever it used to be, still is. Denied, they're being, we are being asked, the board is being asked to approve the plat that lays out the preliminary thought, this is what we're going to do with this property, which is contrary to its current zoning. Correct. All right. So, in the event we were approved this, or were approved, excuse me, in order to actually make these plans come to fruition, they would need to succeed in getting it rezoned later. Yes?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Point of clarification, we would also ask that the board reconsider the rezoning ordinance from last week.
Okay. So, on the one hand-
Present to the full board.
Sure. So, and last time we didn't have Stephanie and that proved to be a problem. It would be my legal opinion that on the one hand, I mean, obviously the thing to do, if we were to approve one, to approve the other. That simply makes sense. It would seem to be silly to not do it. However, this is still a preliminary plat, right?
Correct.
As the name implies, this is speculative. This is what we're planning on doing, this is what we're hoping to be doing. This is not the final plat. Arguably, the point of a preliminary plat is to make sure everybody is aware of where the project is headed, what the trajectory of the work is, and it would not be out of their own possibility for a preliminary plat to be approved on day 1 and day 100, we've decided we need to rezone it. It doesn't present a legal impediment. Now, again, from an efficiency standpoint, plainly the thing to do would be to approve both or deny both. I mean, that makes sense. But it's not legally required. If you decide to approve this tonight and they ask to re-rezone in a month, you could take it up in a month and do it. You see what I'm saying? It doesn't obligate you one way or the other. It logically and efficiently makes the most sense, no doubt, but it doesn't obligate you. That's my opinion. With that being said-
So, does approving the preliminary plat before approving the rezoning, would that allow them to do, you know, proceed with building and moving ahead without the zoning being correct for the preliminary plat?
Presumably, they could, and I don't want to imply that I'm an expert in the details of this particular project. They could start making plans, they could start making preparations. I presume where the line in the sand is, is building the structures. When they, they would probably be unable to get a building permit to build the buildings as it's presently zoned. That would be my presumption. They could grade the land, they could buy materials, they could make further architectural plans. They could certainly make progress on the project. But I presume where the red line would be is you can't build these kind of buildings in this area without the rezoning. And I would imagine that these gentlemen are competent developers, they would not approach that red line needlessly. You know, and as the gentleman just said, they would like to get them both though, which makes perfect sense. And I totally agree with them. I mean, it is sort of silly to approve one and not the other, but you're not legally required to, you're not obligated to. Again, I don't know why you would approve one and not the other, but you could make such a decision. For instance, approve their plat tonight, let's say we never rezone it, fellas, you're going to need to change your plans. This isn't going to work the way you hoped. I mean, that is legal option. It's inefficient, but you could do that.
The rezoning cannot be reconsidered tonight because it wasn't on the agenda.
So, we talked about this last time. A motion to reconsider requires, I looked it up in Robert's rule, it requires a motion by the prevailing party. So, somebody who voted no would need to make the motion to bring it up to vote yes. We didn't have an alderman here, that was Stephanie Bell. It would be cleaner from a preliminary procedure standpoint to put it back on the agenda at a later date, the next meeting, for example. But we've approved this agenda, it's not on there, you're being asked to approve for a second reading this preliminary plat, which, again, as I understand it, it's been approved, it has conditions that we're looking for, but could not come to fruition as it's currently zoned. Does that everybody agree with that?
Mind if I address that?
Please, please.
So, it really wouldn't make a whole lot of sense from a development standpoint to move forward with any construction or anything without the rezoning, without really any assurances that it would ever be able to be zoned properly. If you went out and built all the streets and then came back for the rezoning and, again, it got voted down, then you're back to the drawing board and you've got all the street built, it wouldn't make any sense. I believe from a reconsideration standpoint, yes, I think either Alderman Wilson or Alderman Plank would need to bring that forward. Not necessarily to vote yes, but for consideration before the full board.
I agree.
We were at 3 to 2, actually in favor, but it takes a majority of the elected members, so 4 out of 7. So, I would just ask that either Alderman Wilson or Alderman Plank bring that back for reconsideration before the full board and have a vote of the full board for the rezoning.
I don't think that's an unreasonable request, but me, one of two things, one of three things will happen. One of you two will make a motion to reconsider, that needs to pass with four votes, and then we vote again on whether or not to do it. So, in other words, approving a motion to reconsider does not approve the underlying subject matter. It just says, we're going to rethink this. You could not do that and we could put it on an agenda for a later date, or we could never bring it up. I don't recommend that last option, obviously. No question from an efficiency standpoint, the thing to do is bring it up now, but you're, again, not legally required to. It would be, if it came to pass that we were to bring up zoning on a, let's say, the next meeting, would it be your preference to table the application for the preliminary plat approval as well?
I think that would make the most sense.
I agree.
Again, it, these two items really kind of align currently. The preliminary plat doesn't make a whole lot of sense without the zoning.
So, Mr. Mayor, would be my opinion, do either of the, what's the word in the preliminary procedure, not credited members, advantage members? Forgive me, there's a word, but Mr. Plank or Mr. Wilson, do either of you have a motion?
No, I don't. I'll make the motion to reconsider because I have fairness.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Vote on the motion to reconsider the zoning application change. A or nay vote, where? Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Wilson?
Aye.
Almond Bell?
Aye.
Almond Ode?
Aye.
Almond Plank?
Nay.
Almond Bokar?
Aye.
So, from the last agenda, it was a request to zone from what to what do you recall?
From R1 to R3 and IL, I didn't know what it was.
And the crux of that change is you would allow to be doing what that you can on R1?
So, they could do commercial development. So, the holdup from the last one was the lack of access and, if you remember, through residential rezon there.
And this was the, the Lecters?
The Lecter, yes.
So, here's, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I mean, if you won't catch up, that's-
No, no, no.
Okay. So, here's my question. Some of this is, I'd just like to hear, but some of this is like literally, so Lakeside National, rezoned commercial like a year, two years, before they ever put in a plat, ever actually built anything? What I am stuck on, and I know some of it's just because the city code is semi-convoluted, I mean, I'm a code expert by any stretch of the imagination anyway, so even if it was straightforward, maybe I wouldn't quite grasp all the nuances, but my, my understanding, like you were saying, is that the concern or the the issue that planning and zoning had was access feeder streets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which I don't think should have any bearing on whether it gets rezoned or not. If that's not accurate, I mean, I'd like to know, but I think that feeder streets, secondary access, all of those things would be similar to plat approval, building permits, et cetera, similar to what we just talked about on 2A. Is that accurate or not accurate or semi-accurate?
So, it's a preliminary plat, so in addition-
Well, just talking about the zoning portion too, because I feel like the zoning and plat going together was kind of confusing for-
Right. So, it was presented with the preliminary plat at the same time. So, for just the rezoning, no, it wouldn't have to be held up by that. But as the preliminary plat stands.
So, I have a question about that. So, if we were to approve the rezoning, and so there's this section of land that is in light industrial and nothing can be done with it until the secondary access is worked out. And then suppose a developer decides not to or doesn't want to or can't get the easements for the other roads, are we doing a disservice by rezoning that? Because then here's this land that's rezoned into something that can't be used and then maybe would be of less value to somebody that would, might want to purchase it to do something else with it because they would have to go back through the whole process of getting it rezoned into something that could be done.
I would tell you that this is the tension and the struggle that faces every town with development. Development is expensive, it requires a long-term plan. You are inevitably facing this problem. This is the ambition to do this. We need certain assurances to make it economically feasible to take the risk of attempting that effort. But if things go wrong and things go, that don't happen, occasionally a city will decide, in retrospect, we were premature to give that approval or to, you know, indulge in this ambition. There's no real good way around that. I mean, that's what, you're always having to face this problem. They can't be assured that there won't be difficulties. We can't be assured that things will go perfectly. I don't mean to diminish your concern, I think it's valid, but I think it's something that comes up, that is the essence of the problem. The tension with development is, in an ideal world, the city would say, we will wait until you're all the way done to make sure everything's perfect, then we'll approve it. Of course, the gentleman, on the other hand, that their position is, we would like to be guaranteed that every step of the way, we will be approved so that we get our financing money. Obviously, the reality's somewhere in the middle. There is some practicable point between, we need to give them enough opportunity to attempt their effort while maintaining enough control so that the whole thing goes, you know, south, it doesn't ruin future efforts. That's a nice sermon, I know. It doesn't much help you with your decision.
Well, so that, therein lies the question, I guess, again, is that I just want to be clear. I mean, my decision previously was based on an opinion that, so like the P&amp;Z Board, they do not recommend it because the site access is unplanned. And I guess my blatant question would be, does the site access have any actual bearing on rezoning?
For example, this is hypothetical to demonstrate the point. If someone were to say, I want to put an oil refinery next to the elementary school, you could have a whole variety of reasons. This is an eyesore, it's dangerous, it smells bad, and oh, by the way, we don't want all the tanker trucks right next to school buses. I mean, those are legitimate concerns for a zoning problem. I don't personally think it rises to the level of the kind of a concern that would justify saying no. You're rezoning it to allowing this effort to move forward. The preliminary plat lays out ideas, but you are not legally wrong to say, I think this is so bad for traffic flow, I want to vote no. Because light industrial areas will have a different kind of traffic pattern than single-family housing. I don't think it's an oil refinery, but, and again, this is step 6 of 600, but that's not a crazy concern. I know that you are, to your credit, you are consistent in this concern. You raise it frequently, you defend that position well, so I'm not being critical of your, of your passion on this point. I don't think it rises to the level personally, but you are justified in voting based on it.
Can I address a couple of those?
Sure.
Just to touch on Almond Ode's, or Almond Ode's question on the site access, whether it's zoned, light industrial, or whether it's zoned R1 as it is today, to fully develop that property, it's going to require a second point of access. So, really, the question of access is there no matter what it's zoned. So, it's really, you know, independent of what the zoning is. The the point I made in my letter that I sent out earlier today, the second point of access isn't automatically required to develop a phase of this property. So, the developer could start on a first phase with the residential property that would access Ashley Drive, and then when he's able to secure that. And really, he has an access easement over a portion of the Rankin property. He could, he could put in an access across the Rankin property to the north. The ideal situation, as expressed by the city, and I share that view as an engineer, would be to put the access directly through, straight through, and not have it weaving through behind the subdivision over there, behind Rankin. So, he's, he's working towards getting that access straight through the Rankin property.
Has it been any progress with that yet?
Yeah. I mean, we've been in meetings. It's just, there's a lot involved, a lot of people involved, the schools involved. There's a grant that the school got to get there, so there's, there's a lot of entities involved. But I don't think I'm going to have a problem getting it. Everybody wants it, but it's just the staff getting it, like everything else.
Would the rezoning lend weight to your request to them for that easement to go through, or, I mean, would they, would that help you? Would it hurt you by not having it?
Well, I don't, it's not going to hurt, and Lincoln, that's zoned, the exact zoning that, you know, I'm looking for. So, even their projects, it'll help them get their projects through. So, there's a lot of projects. They're going to need more land and they'll probably need some of that for their, whether it's mine or the lines, they're going to need some of that anyways. I feel like they're going to get expand, and to expand their school, they're going to need it anyways.
If I could add one more point that I don't think it may get. So, we're talking about the preliminary plat tonight, so he could still have the final plat. And he could final plat a portion of it, just R3, without the light industry, and then that solves that issue.
Yes, thank you, Darren. And I should have mentioned that again, that the, with, the board will see any final plat come forward again, the board will see any development plans that come for any of that property. So, whether it's residential or whether it's any industrial that would occur, the board will see those and be able to review those and approve those. I believe everything in our proposal currently meets city code, meets spire code. As we develop, there's going to be some more codes that come into play here that we're going to have to meet and we're going to have to have that second point of access at some point in the future, but it's not currently required for what we're trying to do.
And when we vote, we're just talking about the rezoning now. The preliminary plat would be a second vote separate.
So, we've got the motion reconsider was granted. We're somewhat awkwardly going back, but we're talking about the second reading for the rezoning request. Stephanie, do you have any questions?
Stephanie, do you have any questions?
I don't. This is, this discussion's been really helpful. Appreciate it.
The Collector Street, what's the issue with that? I mean, we're still talking about industrial going on residential. Are we still doing that?
Well, so the, the Collector Street, residential Collector Street question is, to be honest, a little bit of a gray area. Because I don't, I'm not sure the city actually has classified their streets. So to be fair, it's a little bit of gray area. But we're willing to compromise that, okay, there's some residential on Ashley Drive. So we're willing to commit that, okay, we're not going to put any industrial in until that second point of access is developed. So we won't be putting the industrial traffic through a residential, what had, a, a street that has resi- residential property on it.
So there won't be big trucks going by, even if it's a duplex. I've lived in duplexism, you know. I got my rights here, you know, so.
And I mean, again, so like, but that would be a plat kind of question anyway, right? So like, if we rezone it and they decided tomorrow, hey, we're going to put an industrial right next to there, that would, is separate from the.
That would be a separate matter. And it would be, the city maintains an element of control because it's a preliminary plat. This would be a different, they're, they're not asking us to take that big of a leap of faith. They are asking for permission to pursue this. There is an expectation that they will do X, Y, and Z. And maybe they will, maybe they won't. But we have the control to deny the final plat. If they end up wanting to build an, an industrial structure next to Mont Paul Kettle, you have the ability to stop that from happening. You could do it today, but you have two safeties, if you will, this stage and further down the road.
Really, really, you even have three, because if you would have a plat in the future, you would, you would have the site plan in the future. If we came in for something industrial on that portion of property, the city could reject that and say, no, you don't have the access needed.
Very good point.
Well, we just wouldn't do it.
So we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve second reading of a rezoning from R one to R three and L one.
Correct.
Right. Okay, the motion to approve the reconsider, a rezoning, a commercial to R one or be R one and L one, and a light industrial.
R three. Sorry, correction. Yeah, correction. Rezoning from R one to R three and I L.
Thank you, thank you.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Alman Bochard?
Hi.
Alman Blain?
Nay.
Alman Hold?
Aye.
Alman Bell?
Aye.
Alman Wilson?
Aye.
Alman Lewis?
Aye.
So the rezoning has been granted. We're back on the agenda. We're back on track. The matter is the ordinance approving the preliminary plat.
Yep. So we've already discussed it.
Yes.
So can I get a motion to approve Council Bill number one four oh five four and ordinance approving Forest Park Plat three, preliminary plat? I have a second.
Last second.
Alman Bush?
Aye.
Alman Wilson?
Aye.
Alman Bell?
Aye.
Alman Hold?
Nay.
Alman Blain?
Nay.
Alman Bochard?
Aye.
Four two. Four two, pass it, pass it. All right, moving on to new business. A resolution entering into, in, uh, engineering agreement with Christina Lubert of Lubert Engineering for engineering services for Angel Lane.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, before you this evening, there's a resolution that will, uh, seeking authorization to enter contract with Lubert Engineering for, uh, stormwater repairs on E, East Angel Lane. Trying to find the block range and of course, I didn't put it in my memo. But, uh, back in last month, when we had a significant amount of rainfall over a short period of time, there was a culvert that was already on our list for needing repairs. This amount of rainfall was simply too much for that culvert to withstand and it, uh, experienced a critical failure. Since then, we've had to close down the westbound lane of East Angel Lane. Fortunately, that road does not get a lot of, uh, a lot of consistent traffic within short periods of time, but it does have routine traffic throughout the day and night due to the proximity of the airport and the USPS hub and, uh, other, uh, businesses in, along Airport Drive. In efforts to make repairs to this, uh, internal discussion and the, uh, need for expediency, it was, uh, decided that we would seek the assistance of Lubert Engineering through a separate contract. Although she is, uh, acting as the city engineer, uh, would determine that a separate contract would be needed as that would not remain the initial scope of services agreed upon. The, the estimate she's provided this evening is for six thousand five hundred dollars. And that would include the engineering services only, the, uh, design, surveying, hydraulic and hydrology study. At that point, um, we would then make a determination as to the best way to proceed with the project. The current plan, it would be for the materials to be sourced and the project to be completed by Ashland Public Works staff along with the assistance of Boone County Road and Bridge staff.
So my only real question is, is there, is there like a cost savings with using Christina? I mean, is it a matter of convenience? Is it potentially cheaper?
Both. Um, so just for, uh, you know, I don't have the numbers from the twenty nineteen, um, engineer or the culvert repair, but they were significant. I remember that. In my experience with projects of this nature, the first thing that would need to be completed, um, if we did an RFP, uh, for engineering services, then the first thing they're going to want to do is complete a preliminary engineering report. I've seen those range in price from five thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars. And I'll refer back to the Sarah Drive Bridge project that we completed in twenty twenty, uh, an existing bridge we found to have significant deficiencies. Ultimately, we put a box culvert in and it became a very low maintenance, uh, water crossing. That is the goal with this as well. But we had, uh, and, and don't quote me here, I'm going off the top of my head, but I want to say it was north of fifty thousand dollars worth of engineering fees with that project. I believe this is a better option to complete the work faster. Uh, as I said, it's a critical failure. We want to get it taken care of as soon as possible. And I think there's significant cost savings, not only with the engineering, but if we were able to complete this project in-house with the assistance of Boone County Road and Bridge.
Any questions today? I get a motion to approve a resolution entering into an engineering agreement with Christina Lubert of Lubert Engineering for the services of Angel Lane.
Someone?
I have a second. Second. Alman Bochard?
Aye.
Alman Blain?
Aye.
Alman Hold?
Aye.
Alman Bell?
Aye.
Alman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alman Lewis?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to Eminem Landscaping and Construction LLC contract for the Perry Avenue Extension Project.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, before you this evening, we're seeking approval to, approval of change order number one, which would extend the deadline of the Perry Avenue Extension Project from October thirty first, two thousand twenty-three to December twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, this has been, this is at the request of the contractor, Eminem Landscaping and Construction. As you well aware, we have had a multitude of delays that will be on city's, uh, city's control with this project. I'm glad you're all sitting down. We got the, uh, we cleared all the hurdles last week on Thursday to, uh, issue notice to proceed. It'll be the next item before you. This is merely, uh, trying to clean up some of that contract and put the contractor in the best position to be successful to complete this, uh, the Perry Avenue Extension. I will also note that I had a, uh, bi-weekly meeting with all of the involved parties of the Rankin project as a whole today and advised them of this plan, uh, upon approval. And they were all in acceptance of that and, uh, supported.
I get a motion approving a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a change order, number one, to Eminem Landscaping and Construction LLC contract for the Perry Avenue Extension Project. Someone? I have a second.
I have a second.
Alman Lewis?
Aye.
Alman Wilson?
Aye.
Alman Bell?
Aye.
Alman Hold?
Aye.
Alman Blain?
Aye.
Alman Bochard?
Aye.
We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a notice to proceed to Eminem Landscaping and Construction as part of the Perry Avenue Extension.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, before you, we are seeking approval, uh, to issue a notice to proceed, as alluded to, uh, previously, for the Perry Avenue Road Extension Project. As I mentioned, we were notified on Thursday of last week that all of the required documents have been completed and signed and approved. And I have a list of such in the agenda memo that kind of goes over, glosses over a lot of that, but there are, there are a lot more than what we have there. Award, the contract has already been awarded. We are ready to begin. Contractor is ready to begin. We just need the notice to proceed. And we will have a, a second pre-con, uh, pre-construction conference later this week. And I anticipate that upon approval tonight, work would, uh, begin at some point next week.
Any questions?
They got any crew left to finish up there?
Uh, yes, sir. So.
Save for your report.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
All right. We get a motion to approve all the, authorizing the mayor to issue a notice to proceed to Eminem Landscaping and Construction as part of the Perry Avenue Extension.
Someone?
I have a second. Sorry. Alman Bochard?
Aye.
Alman Blain?
Aye.
Alman Hold?
Aye.
Alman Bell?
Aye.
Alman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alman Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to reports. Uh, mayor report. Um, got a couple of questions or a couple of concerns came up. Uh, flag at City Hall. Yes, sir. What about it? We found one.
We got it?
No, we didn't get it, but we found one. We're trying to procure. We just got to determine if it's, we're trying to decide between, is it mountain on the ground or mountain on the building and determining what's going to be the best option for us, but.
Mountain on the building, we're.
You said flag versus the old, right?
Yeah, but I've been with big pole and.
We have to determine if that's kosher with Modart Radley right there. But we're either going to put one out back on that concrete pad that's already there. Or look at a, a building mountain one if we have to, but. We have to put on this one over here? Maybe. You got a telephone pole right there on our corner of the property. So that might be problematic. All right, cool. And then, um, watering station at the dog park was blocked.
Watering station with dog?
Yeah, there's no water turned on at a customer, or a customer lady calling.
Okay, I'll follow up on each one.
Uh, water fountain at the park. We still have a new one at the old bathrooms.
No, the one at the old bathrooms was taken down because it was no longer, uh, serviceable. And then it had to be moved for the, uh, you know, timing. It had to be moved for the mural. That is a point of conversation that we are working through with the park board. Uh, now that fall crisis is concluded, we will begin planning, uh, various improvements to complete throughout the remainder of fiscal year.
All right. Main Street striping? No, not Main Street. Uh, Henry Clay striping.
Uh, yes, it was initially scheduled to be completed this week. Uh, the contractor pushed back. Uh, it's supposed to be next week now.
And then Main Street, have we, uh, day on, was we, we serviced?
Um, if not next, it depends on what this weather does, with the rain that's supposed to be coming in tonight and over the next, uh, several days. But, uh, we anticipate that if it's not completed next week, then all the paving would be completed the following week, of course, weather permitting.
Okay. And then striping downtown on Broadway, we haven't talked about that? We have talked. We want to meet you onsite to discuss further. So maybe Thursday afternoon, we'll go down there. And that is my report. Thank you. City administration report.
Yeah.
Couple of things here. Let's steal from Darren's report, but, uh, Planning and Zoning received the Land and Development Code draft last week for review. They're going to meet again in a digital format next Tuesday, I believe, with the plans.
Virtually.
Provide some initial comments to the consultant and start working through that. So we've got a copy that will provide to legal for review as well. And a copy that will provide to Christina for her review as well and comments. Board of Adjustment will meet this Thursday. Just a quick update on Ready. So they, they maintain a location one property listing on, on their website. Most recently, Dave Westhoff was able to get Boone Corner listed on there. So that's kind of been something that we try to work on with SBC and the Chamber and whatnot, is making sure that our available spaces that we have and our available properties that we have for commercial industrial development make it onto that listing. So we're excited to see Dave's property on there because there's really not, in terms of, uh, buildings, there's really no building stock represented on, on Ready's location one website. They do have some properties available for development, but in terms of actual buildings, there's, there's really few on there. So it's, it's great to see some Ashland ones popping up on there because there's really not a long list. So we quickly rise to the alphabetical top of the list. Some other updates with SBC, the Chamber, ABC. Uh, they're planning a, a group stakeholder meeting, uh, with their respective leadership in October. Just to continue to discuss strategic partnerships between those three entities. That's kind of been an ongoing thing for the last year and a half. So I'm excited to see those, those leaders get together and, and talk about how those organizations can work together. ABC, uh, they're also evaluating options to potentially provide a facade improvement grant for their designated corridor in the downtown region. So excited to see what they come up with for that. That's certainly something that we as staff have, have an interest in. Obviously, we think that would be a great fit for the city and the board and probably something that everyone would be quite excited about in our downtown corridor. ABC is also working on some more planters. They had some questions floated to staff with regards to the, the downtown sidewalks along Broadway and what would work and what wouldn't work. So we're helping kind of evaluate some options there to, to make sure we're not impeding the sidewalk, but still helping facilitate some, some beautification downtown. And that is all I have. Moving on to the city's, Chinese report?
Yes. Amendment three is recreational marijuana. There's a provision in there for micro businesses. It's kind of misleading. It has nothing to do with the size. It is if your owner is a veteran, a racial minority, a woman, et cetera. There was a lottery for people who applied. Eleven licenses have been granted for Ashland. That sounds like a lot, and it is, but eleven people who entered the lottery got picked. I do not expect there to be eleven micro dispensaries in Ashland. Uh, the website, this is from the state. There is a million hurdles, but this is just the first step. So, uh, more for Darren, probably anybody else. These are folks who, for example, are going to be coming to the city talking about opening a dispensary. Uh, because the original licenses for recreational dispensaries were really hard to get. I mean, this is a huge deal to apply. But this amendment three has this new procedure. So, um, by chance, um, one of the, um, the rank order, there were a hundred and twenty-seven permits issued for this congressional district. Uh, an Ashland applicant is number nine. So pretty high on the list. Anyway, um, it's just letting you know that that's a thing. And the two things I want you to take home are, micro business, despite the name, does not mean it has to be small. It means it can't be a mainstream corporate entity. I, I don't like this word, but most people use the word disadvantaged owners as the idea, to give them a chance to compete in this new industry. But for example, in other cities where I've given this speech, there are going to be people who've applied for stuff that's less than a thousand feet from a school, for example. So there are other details. But I was surprised too. You all had eleven. So that's my report. Darren, I'll email you that one.
Pudding Works Director report?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'll just hit on a few high points. We've discussed a lot of these things already this evening. South Main Street, all the water line work has been completed and crews are currently approximately fifty percent complete with all the items that were approved in change order one. Once they complete that, schedule with the, uh, paver and, and get that project buttoned up. Perry Ave, we've been over that. South Henry Clay striping, we've been over that. The FY twenty-four millimeter overlay project. Uh, capital paving has, uh, all of the street patch work has been completed by ABW staff. And capital paving anticipates arriving to complete that work in mid to late October, which is in accordance with the competitive bid documents, uh, requirement with the deadline of November third. Uh, we discussed the Angel Lane culvert repairs. The TAP grant sidewalk trail project is still underway. Cultural resource survey has been completed with no significant findings. So we're currently working with the co-applicants and design engineer to finalize those preliminary designs. Parks and Fall Festival as well. We're going to work with the park board now that the festival is over to, uh, implement some future improvements that were identified. Parks, the Fall Festival as well, we're gonna work with the park board now that the festival is over to, uh, implement some future improvements that were identified in the master plan. And the, uh, VCRSD Ops Report is attached for your perusal.
Moving on. Any questions for James, sorry? Moving on to the Urban Development report.
Any questions for me?
Why are you looking at me?
Start, start with you. What, down the line?
Getting the business of swinging to town? And we can speak up.
Maybe eleven.
Maybe.
Well, it's, so it's thirty-four pages.
Rebrand the Fall Festival.
It's thirty-four pages and it's little tiny Bible print, so you know, Ctrl F, Ashland.
Oh, yeah.
Now that's interesting, James talking about. Eleven? But it's eleven.
Wow.
Blue and white report. Almond Lewis. No report. Almond Wilson.
No report.
Almond Bell.
I just want to say I appreciate, uh, the city staff accommodating me, uh, tonight, uh, and for the extra work it took me to allow me to participate. So I appreciate your time.
No problem, thank you. How was your trip?
Besides getting COVID great.
Almond O.
No report.
Almond Blaine.
No report.
And Almond Gohkar.
Um, there's probably could be a quick email, but since we're thinking about it, there's a, that, a spot on the north side of, you know, like sixty-three overpass at the east side of East Side Drive on the shoulder. A big giant soft spot that turns into a big hole. I feel like that's been there several times before. Not a huge issue, except that it seems like it's expanding out into the actual street. It, it's, you have two-thirds in the shoulder or whatever. But yeah, that's pretty much all I got.
Any comments from the general public? All right. Do we need to vote for a motion? Yeah, a motion to, uh, vote to go into closed session. Um, very statute six one zero dot zero two one, Article three and one. Give the motion.
I'll make the motion.
And the second?
Yeah.
Almond Gohkar.
Aye.
Almond Blaine.
Aye.
Almond O.
Aye.
Almond Bell.
Aye.
Almond Wilson.
Aye.
And Almond Lewis.
Aye.
Me in second.
Uh, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Do we have to hear that?
Right, at this time we have nothing to report. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Somebody.
And second.
Second.